Do we have any comments or additions about the agenda additions?
Absolutely not.
No ma'am.
Okay, we need someone to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second. Any other comments or additions? Okay, roll call. Not roll call. All those agree? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, passes. We have the consent agenda. Everybody had a chance to look over that. This is a group, isn't it?
Yes, just one, one motion.
Yeah, we need a motion to approve.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we get to the financial report, which is going to be handled so well by our director.
So as you can see, Scott Ray is not with us tonight, but he did leave me some notes with regards to the March financial statement. Pretty much, we are on track. We have seen some increases in revenues. Property tax revenues this year are going to end approximately about a hundred thousand dollars greater than budgeted. And sales tax revenues are on track to end approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars higher than what we thought they would. So this will be certainly good news as we end our year. BUP, there's not really going to be any significant changes there. We have had a couple of expenditures that we did not budget that some of this money will help us offset. We've had to replace a significant number of exterior doors at South Clinton Elementary School. From where the, the school has settled, the doors aren't opening easily to the exterior, which is a fire safety concern. And so we have replaced, we've got a couple of more that we need to replace, that we will be doing that between now and the beginning of next year. We also have replaced the South Clinton fire panel, and then we have done some various floor improvements in all three schools. So the federal projects funds, you're going to see some increases in those areas just due to that Esser money that we have. We will be putting Esser 1.0 funds and Esser 2.0 funds in this fiscal year. The Esser 3.0, which was the 1.5 million dollars, will be in next fiscal year, so we won't plug that in until July. And then with our cafeteria and school nutrition funds, we are just, we're right on target. We do expect that we will have a slight overage this year due to the USDA waiver and the fact that all of our kids are able to eat breakfast and lunch for free. So that's going to continue until the end of the year. So no major, no major issues, no major concerns. Scott feels really good about where we are at this point in the fiscal year. He will be bringing in May and June our final budget amendments just to get our line items back in, back in lack before the end of the fiscal year. So, any questions for me? Joey?
I don't have any.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the financial report.
So make, oh, make a motion?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a roll call vote.
Wait, is it the budget or the financial?
Financial statement. Financial statement.
Kay Kay Webster?
Yes.
Merle Price?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Okay, we now go to the new business requiring action by the board. We need to approve the 2021-2022 budget on the second reading.
Yes, so Scott made a few slight adjustments, just in, in a couple of line items here or there, but the net revenues and net expenditures stayed the same from the first reading to the second reading, so no significant, no significant changes. So we did keep, if you remember last month, we talked about the million dollar loan that we are in current discussions on whether we go ahead and pay that back or use that for a South Clinton Elementary project. We have kept that in the line item for payment to the city at this point, just because we don't know what we're going to do with it. But that will be an easy budget amendment. Once we decide which way we're going to go, we can handle, handle that through a budget amendment next year. So any questions on the second reading?
Do we have a motion to approve this, uh, the 2021-2022 budget second reading?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Kay Kay Webster?
Yes.
Merle Price?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Okay, now we go to approve revised 2021-2022 school calendar.
So we've made just a few slot revisions to the original calendar that you approved several months ago for next school year. Um, we, I met with teacher groups at our last collaborative day and just received some input on things that they thought went well this year, things that didn't go well this year, things we might want to consider. There was an overwhelming majority of the teachers who thought that the stagger start to the beginning of the year was beneficial. Having the students all day to where they could walk through the routine of the entire school day and walk through lunch and walk through dismissal without having the rest of the, you know, the entire student body in there just created a calmer start for parents, for students, and for teachers. And so we're not going to do three stagger days like we did due to COVID, but we are going to narrow it and do two stagger days. And this really helps especially with dismissal, because the first day of dismissal, it is a half day. It's always different than it is a full day, and it's always kind of chaotic knowing what kids are doing on the first half day, but then what they're going to do from there on. And the best thing that we can do for parents is make sure we have a smooth dismissal and we get students back in their hands, you know, making good first impression on that first day. So what we, what we are doing is we are going to do a stagger day to where on the August the ninth, which is Monday, our K through two students are going to come to school for a full day of instruction. Three through six is going to do a distance learning day at home. So when they come to sneak peek to meet their teacher, to pick up their beginning of the year supplies, there will be a work packet of beginning of the year review activities and things that they can do, and they will do a distance learning day at home on August the ninth. And then on August the tenth, we will have our three through six students bring that packet to work on their first day of school, and they will have a complete first day of school. And first and second grade students will have a distance learning day on August the tenth. Their teachers on that first day will send home that packet, go over what they want them to do, and then they will stay at home on the tenth. This entire week, we will be doing kindergarten stagger day. So Monday through Thursday, kindergarten will be doing their usual stagger. And then on Wednesday, the eleventh, everybody comes to school beginning every day. And so that was one change that I wanted to make sure we verbalized, and we obviously will communicate that to parents as soon as the calendar is approved. But then also, because we are doing the full days at the beginning of the year, this past year, we did not do a half day in December, and we're going to reinstate that half day on that Friday based on input from teachers. And so we're going to reinstate that half day on December the seventeenth. And so the only two half days that we will have during the whole entire year will be the December seventeenth and the last day of school. So those are the only two changes that we have made in the calendar.
I personally like the half day at Christmas.
Yes.
Because they are so excited. And you want to be really nice because it's Christmas.
Well.
Even though they're not being.
And what we heard too was that that's the end of the semester, end of grading period, and then, you know, our staff is trying to get home for the holidays as well, but they want to wrap up and get those grades inputted, and they, they have a lot of things that they want to wrap up so then they can go home for the holidays as well. And so that's historically what we have done. We did take it out last year just because we were doing those stagger days at the beginning. But the way that we're going to code and the way we're actually going to continue learning, it's just going to be distance learning that will allow us to keep that half day in.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the revised 21-22 school calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the new school calendar.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Well, any questions or comments first? All those in favor?
Aye.
Most opposed? Okay, the next thing is to approve the change in the school board meeting from May the thirteenth to the sixth, and that's due to the retreat that we're taking. And we have to approve that and vote on that. Kelly, you want to say anything about it?
No, we just basically are moving it up a week just because we decided to hold our retreat the next week to do a discussion about what to do with our Esser money, so.
Okay, Kim, I would make a suggestion that you remind me that it's the sixth instead. I can have it on the calendar, but a little reminder goes a long way.
I'll second that. Everybody gets ticks. Do you have everybody gets ticks? Including me.
Okay, any comments or questions? Okay, need a motion to approve the change in the school board meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Second?
Okay, all those appro, all those approved?
Aye.
Aye.
All those? No? We all approved? Yay. Okay, we just need a reminder, I won't be here. Okay, now we go to reports and information.
Okay, we will start with our principal reports, and so Jenna will just start with Clinton Elementary today.
Can you all hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just want to start out with, we were lucky enough this week to spend a couple of days with Keely Potter from NIET, and I know you will probably talk a little bit more about it, but she discussed some strength-based coaching strategies with us, and I want to thank Ms. Connor, Ms. McBride, Ms. Atkins, Ms. Witt, Ms. Bible, Ms. Murphy, Ms. Terry, and Ms. Brock for being a part of that. She interviewed some of our teachers and talked about our strengths, and then she also asked them if they had a magic button, what would they change? So I'm excited to hear more about that, and our walkthroughs were amazing. And she talked with us about how to give some really good feedback based on what the students were doing. So that was really good, and we look forward to working with her in the future. And we would like to welcome Ms. Kaylee Hough and Ms. Taylor Bailey. That will be joining our staff next year. And Kaylee is an intern currently in second grade for Ms. Ashley Brock, and Taylor is coming to us from North Clinton. And we have some more changes that I'll talk about at the next meeting. And then I also want to thank Todd Temple. He has designed and installed a CES art gallery sign. So if you are in the school, once you go past the gym, and that's where Ms. Swanner hangs her artwork. And the sign looks really nice. It just helps present the already amazing artwork on the wall. It presents it well. So if you get by the school, please go look at that. And then speaking of the artwork, Saturday is Mosaic Day, Art Day downtown, and they are going to raise funds for Clinton City and Anderson County Schools, which I'm sure you might talk a little bit more about that too. And there's going to be all kinds of fun festivities for the kids and student artwork from Clinton Elementary and other Clinton schools there. But our sixth grade did some needle felt scenery of Clinton, and I wanted to buy it, but apparently I've already been out there and I've heard Mr. Smith, you and maybe, or maybe that was your wife, but part of.
I didn't get it either.
Too, but hopefully she'll do it again in the future. It looks amazing. So if you get a chance, go by and see that this weekend.
It's already sold?
It's already sold. It already sold.
Yes.
And it will be prominently displayed in a nice public place.
With student names. Hopefully next year, we'll get that. I'd like one for the office. I think it's really, really neat. Our leadership teacher team and our student leadership team got together today to make motivational videos for T and R testing, and they are so cute. So once we get them done and blended together, I'll have to show you all. But that was a fun little adventure for the students and the staff. I don't know who had more fun doing those. But some fun stuff. Our testing will begin next week, and we will be testing on the thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, twenty-second, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth for CES. And Ms. Jordan is going to do the virtual testing in our school next week as well. And then just another date to throw out there, May third, we will have kindergarten roundup at Clinton Elementary School, so.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. What's going on? All right, Ms. Bonesteel, South Clinton. Oh, oh, no, no, no. Ms. Ryle was already up and leaving. So Ms. Ryle, you come on up, girlfriend.
Mine is very, very short and sweet and to the point. We did have a couple of kind of more serious things happen in last month. We had a leadership committee meeting, and after Director Johnson met with our school and the teacher teams and the assistants, and kind of got some feedback about how things went this year. At leadership, we just talked about ways to implement and incorporate anything that we might need to keep, keep the things that are working and change anything that wasn't for next year. We also had a community pre-K advisory council meeting to, to review the needs of our pre-K programming. Right now, we're not making any significant changes to that at this time. I did have a couple of little tidbits to share about some fun things going on at school. The Health Club finished their learning about healthy lifestyles, and healthy lifestyles of exercising and trying new healthy foods. They always get to try some new foods there. And then they created a striped soup mix where they had little layered beans and lentils and things, and they were so excited. Some of them had never seen the little jar lids that were the two parts, and they kept saying, my lid is broken. But they were very excited, and they all were excited about going home and, and having something to cook with their family, which was really precious. Third grade, as part of a poetry unit, wrote some haikus. And then Ashley Webb, our art teacher, had them make some little Japanese lanterns with spring seams that go with their little haikus. So we have a great little bulletin board in the building for that. And then sixth grade today, I had to add this, they tried some authentic Chinese foods after a unit on China, like Dorian fruit, stinky, stinky, jackfruit, dumplings, eel, ramen noodles, and they practiced using their chopsticks. I have some fabulous pictures of those as well. It's really good times. So they had, they had a fun time today with that.
That had to be a blast.
Oh, it was.
What was their favorite?
Uh, I tell you what, I had two or three that were digging the eel.
Really?
Yes, so.
Wow.
Yeah, we had, we had a good time. Lots of, lots of fruits, lots of veggies, some shrimp flavored Cheetos were part of the mix.
So did the, who did the cooking?
Um, well, interesting that you should ask. Today in the office, we had frying of tofu and steaming of dumplings. And so it was, it was good time.
So Ms. Ryle, was this a learning experience for you as well?
That would be Ms. Patterson and Ms. May that were put to the task by Ms. Fleming for that one. So it was a good time.
They had a good time.
Yeah, they had a great time.
I think Ms. Price would have liked an invitation to that, to return back.
To do this again, I will definitely submit an invitation, and you can get pictures anytime you want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Bonesteel, South Clinton.
Last but not least.
Absolutely not least.
Um, I just want to start with, if you don't know this, which you probably already do, we have two retirees this year at South Clinton Elementary, Ms. Sharon Hayne and Ms. Amanda Hart. And so on our collaborative day on Monday, we had a little celebration lunch at Fiesta for them to celebrate. And they have collaboratively put in fifty-three years at South Clinton Elementary. And so we just wanted to celebrate them, and we had a great turnout, and lots of retirees came to show their love and appreciation. So it was just a great day, and I just would like to thank them because they are two of the hardest workers I know. They come in early, they do whatever is asked of them, and especially this year in a COVID year. From day to day, they never knew if they were going to be doing their regular schedule, if they were going to be teaching gym, if they're going to be teaching kindergarten, and they did whatever was asked. And so those are going to be hard shoes to fill, for sure. Um, I wanted to thank the Boys and Girls Club. They bought new padding for our gym walls, and they look amazing. They're gray, so they match the paint color theme in our school. And then Todd Temple designed the logo, and it says South Clinton Bears and has our Bears mascot, and they just look so great. So I'm really excited to get those in there and get our gym some updates. And along with that, we got a new basketball goal in our gym, and all the kids were super excited when they came in and saw it this morning. And they said, oh, my goodness, how tall is that basketball goal? And they're like, twenty feet. I'm like, it's eight, but you know.
Eight, twenty, it's all same.
So some, some fun updates happening in our gym, which I'm really excited about. We are planning our virtual steam night for, towards the end of May, and so we are going to have children sign up. And Lori Erwin has created a signup sheet with a QR code where the parents can just scan it, and it automatically signs their child up. And we will be sending kids home with all the kiddos that need kids to do those activities. And then we're going to have them fill out a survey at the end, and everybody that fills out a survey is going to have their name put in a drawing for some prizes. So we're excited about that because even though we can't do our regular steam night where we invite ORAU to come in and partner with us, we still want to have, you know, some fun experiences for our kiddos this year, so. And I think that Ms. Sharp and Ms. Ryle covered a lot of this already, but I just want to say we were really excited to have Keely Potter and the admin team come in on Tuesday and do some learning walks through all of our classrooms. And just a funny story, I have to say that when we went into a sixth grade classroom, and one of the students was like, what is happening? And he also told everyone, including Keely Potter from NIET, that it would be a lot less awkward if you could just videotype us and watch it that way. It was a great experience. Very interesting feedback from the kids.
He had a definite opinion about that. Let's just, let's say that. But we are so happy that we have created such a safe learning environment that he felt compelled that he could share those thoughts with us.
Yes.
That concludes our principal reports.
Okay. On the reports and information, we know about the next school board meeting, the board retreat, May thirteenth to fifteenth at Dream More, and that's near Bollywood, correct? I don't go far from home very often. Graduation's May twenty-sixth at Faith Promise Church. Now, is that where the old, uh, Mexican restaurant in that little shopping center?
Yes, where the old food line used to be, in that same shopping center, yes, so.
Okay, the TSBA Summer Law Institute, it's Park Vista, July fifteenth through seventeenth. And I guess, Kim, we'll need to let you know when we're, if we're going. And the director's school evaluation packet that's in this envelope that we need to fill out, and Molly Scarborough has again agreed to help with this this year. Do we have a date on, I guess it's in there, isn't it?
The timeline.
Yeah, the timeline.
Okay, the timeline's there. Okay, any questions or comments, anything? Now we have the director's report.
Okay, a couple of updates with regards to Clinton City. Just to follow up a little bit on the graduation ceremony. In an effort to try to socially distance and just to continue to implement some mitigation efforts as we're hopefully coming out of this COVID situation, Faith Promise agreed to let us have it there where we just have the ability to spread out more. And so we're going to do two different sessions. And so the nine o'clock, we're going to combine South Clinton and North Clinton at a nine o'clock ceremony, and then we'll do Clinton Elementary at the eleven o'clock ceremony. And we decided to divide that up into two ceremonies because we did not want to put ourselves in a situation where we had to say only one parent could come or only two parents could come. This is a special event, and so we're pleased, and Faith Promise has been great to work with us, great to work with us on that for this year. A couple of other updates. The principals hit a lot of our report, which is wonderful. A lot has been happening in Clinton City Schools. We, I'll have to say, in the past week or two, it almost feels like that we are back, we are back to Clinton City Schools. I mean, it just feels like that we're doing the normal things that we were doing before this pandemic hit, the, the usual hustle and bustle of the end of the school year has hit, and so lots of exciting things are happening. But we do want to thank the Boys and Girls Club for donating the gym wall mats. They look absolutely fabulous. Todd Temple did a great job on our logo, and it did add a layer of safety for our gym as kids are running back and forth on, in the gym, so we greatly appreciate that. To update you, Scott Ray and I did meet with MHM Architects, and that's the same architectural firm that did the Clinton Elementary addition. We spent a full morning walking through South Clinton Elementary School and just kind of looking at some opportunities that if we want to use some of our Esser funds to look at adding some additional classrooms. And so we, they very much know that we are just in the discussion stage of that now, that we have not made any final decision by no means. But they know the urgency of this decision just because with Esser funds coming out, we anticipate that a lot of capital projects are getting ready to kick in. And there is concern on the state level that there's going to be a long queue, and you've got a certain time period to spend these funds. And so we wanted to kind of get on the front end of this to where if we do move forward with it, we've positioned ourselves nicely where we can finish this project in a timely manner. So he is going to work diligently to work up a proposal of what it might look like, project, projected costs, and have all of that information ready for you all, for us to discuss at the board retreat. So we appreciate them working with us in our, in our timeframe to give us the information that we need to make an informed decision. So our Mosaic Art Festival is going to be held this Saturday. As you know, the sixth grade art is going to be displayed, so we'll have three pieces of art displayed on Market Street. We are also having some performances. Our Orf Ensemble and our Ukulele Club are going to present beside the gazebo at ten thirty in the morning, and we are super excited about this. They have Blaze, they have Blaze t-shirts that they're going to wear. We are providing transportation to some kids at North Clinton to make sure that they can come and participate in this opportunity. And we are going to be moving over some percussion instruments tomorrow to the Spindletree so that we have our full Orf experience there. So we're looking forward to that, and certainly appreciate Matthew Case and Jason Glasshouser for arranging that and taking time out of their Saturday to give kids this opportunity to perform. And then at two thirty, we are not going to be holding our annual Teacher of the Year banquet this year with the Education Foundation just due to the current situation. And so I will be, I will be presenting and awarding the teachers and the principal of the year at two thirty at the gazebo on that day as well. So we look forward to a wonderful day, and like we said, that's going to be Saturday, yes. And there again, the artwork is being sold, and then there's some other, there's a five K one mile fun walk that's going to take place that day, and all of it's going to go to support art departments. So getting back to business as usual, we are moving forward with our summer camp programs that we typically run at Clinton City Schools. We had to cancel those last year, but we are going to reinstate those this year. So June the first through the fourth, students will have two opportunities. We will be running a STEM camp for rising fifth and sixth graders at North Clinton Elementary School. Vicky Bible and Jill Smithson are going to lead that for us, and it will be a free week-long camp for students. And we are doing that through a state-provided grant through our partnership with ORAU. And then the same week, our rising fourth through sixth graders have the opportunity to attend a week-long Junior Achievement Biztown Camp. I talked to Lori Collins today. That is always a hot item for our students, and we are almost at capacity already for that. So we actually partner with Junior Achievement to make that happen, and we just pay for that camp for students out of our GP funds as part of our enrichment program. And then Allison Swanner, our art teacher at Clinton Elementary, has implemented an Exceptional Artist Camp. This is actually housed at Clinton Elementary School, but it is more of a private camp that is run through her, but it is a top-notch quality art camp that services several hundred students. And so that's going to run from June seventh through eleventh, and students could register for that online. Then our summer learning program is going to kick off, and it's going to be held from June the seventh through July the second. It's going to be an all-day program that focuses on reading, language arts, math, and stream. And stream, of course, is STEM with the arts included in that. And so it will be a full day. We will be serving free breakfast and lunch. It's just going to run like a typical school day. Students from all three schools will be coming. Boys and Girls Club is going to offer the after-school care there. And we, our goal is to get approximately a hundred and seventy-eight students to attend. We are about at a hundred and forty-five now. We had a few more registrations today. So what we have done is we have targeted our at-risk students. We have targeted in grades kindergarten and first, where we know learning loss, significant learning loss in first grade happened with the closing of schools. We are inviting every student that is below grade level and encouraging them to attend. And then in grades two through six, we have invited anyone that is scoring the thirty-fifth percentile or below. And so we are hoping that we can get a few more, a few more student enrollment so that we can reach our capacity there. And then you've heard two of the principals talk about NIET. So last month, you all approved for us to enter an agreement with NIET, and they are the ones who do our team rubric, which is what the teacher observation is based off of. But they do work, it's called strengths-based improvement, and you all know that I'm very big on continuous improvement. And while we are a top school system, we have to work hard to continuously stay there. We can't settle. We have to be constantly trying to improve our craft and see ourselves as learners. And so what their program is, or support, I guess, is, is they come in and they look at our existing strengths and work with us on how we use existing strengths to get better. And so we spent two days with Keely, and I will tell you, it was probably one of the And so we spent two days with Kaylee, and I will tell you, it was probably one of the most powerful two days that I have had professionally in a very long time. But she gets to travel all over multi-states with N I E T and work with districts, and so it was interesting to hear her perspective because, I mean, I feel like Clinton City Schools is a great school, we always say all the time, we love us. But it was so interesting to get her perspective coming in after being in a wide variety of districts. She immediately, of course, saw something special and unique about Clinton City Schools. And the purpose here is to not, it's not an observation on teachers, it's not meant to be a stress on teachers, it is, you're looking at learning through the student lens. And so when we traveled into the classrooms, it wasn't about instruction, it wasn't about teachers, it was about what kids were doing. And so we, we watched what the kids did, did they know what they were learning, were they able to explain why they were learning it? Were they able to talk academic vocabulary? And it was just amazing, just looking in the classroom through that lens, number one, was, was very empowering. But as we walked through, she saw several strengths that I just wanted to share with you, and I've shared this with the staff as well after she left yesterday. But there was a high level of student engagement using academic vocabulary. So one of the things that we were, we were tasked to look at was if kids, what kids were hiding from the learning? What kids were, you know, they were in there, they weren't misbehaving, but they were just trying to hide from participation? And ironically, we couldn't, we couldn't pick that out, our kids are engaged. The teachers have struck, you know, they have created such intense planning to keep kids actively engaged in turn and talks and moves, and they're writing and they're doing, and they've got their computer. I mean, there's not really an opportunity for you to hide from learning in Clinton City schools. Students were always directly working on Tennessee State standards through high-quality text and problems, and so we saw the rigor. The rigor is there in the resources that we are providing students. Students were using strong, well-developed protocols for student-to-student interaction and using accountable talks. And accountable talks is when we're trying to teach students how to justify their answers and defend their answers and respectfully disagree with someone else's answers. So when you walk into a classroom, that might sound like, you know, you know, Merle believes that the moon travels, you know, the moon travels around the sun, I disagree with her because, and then they've got to justify their answer. And so then what you get is they're verbalizing their answers, the students are listening, but they're using that academic vocabulary in their conversations that they are using, and that was well seen throughout our district. And then students felt comfortable taking risks because clearly the classroom was a safe environment, which we saw from our sixth grade student who thought it was awkward that we were all standing there watching him. There is evidence, you know, we've talked about how we're proud of our teacher relationships with students. But what we saw is that there is a very strong relationship from student to student. The teachers have done such an amazing job developing protocols of turn and talk and find a partner and work in this group of four. And there, the kids are just so used to working together, there is just an extreme, there's just an intense respectful culture where kids are so accepting. We walked into one classroom, and Merle, you'll appreciate this, being a former kindergarten teacher, and, and the teacher said, and this is a first grade classroom, and the teacher said, in a minute, you're going to take what you have done, and I want you to go in the room and just find a partner, and here's what you're going to do, you're going to share, and she gave him, and in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, this is going to be a disaster. You don't ever tell first graders just to go find a partner, you've got to have a structure in place for that. No, that's exactly what they did, and they went and they found a partner, and if there was a partner of three, they just went and found someone else. There was no turning back, there was no, I'm going to turn my back and pretend like you didn't come. It was so accepting, and it just, that was a five-second thing, and it just unfolded, and it was so clear that she had just developed the culture that this is what we do, and we are all valuable in the class, and it was just so empowering to see. And then finally, they responded to positively, to intentionally planned questions and instructional activities that were directly tied back to learning targets. And so there is such good, solid things happening, and I think the thing that impressed me the most is that when you walked through, you would have never known that there's a global pandemic happening in Clinton City schools. I mean, teachers have somehow managed to implement mitigation efforts to eat with their kids during lunch, to separate on the playground, to dismiss from their classroom, to breakfast in the classroom, but they still have worked hard to keep that academic expectations high, so it was just very refreshing to see. We certainly have special people. Update on the Blaze, we have bowling tennis and track occurring. We had sixty-five to seventy students are doing track this year. It's amazing.
Wow.
So we have a coach and two assistant coaches now, we had to hire an additional assistant coach, but that runs from first to sixth grade, and Terry Curley is just so excited that so many kids are excited about running. So that is a great program. And then wanted to let you know that we will be meeting with T S B A next week. They actually have chosen to do a Clinton City podcast about our Clinton City Blaze well-rounded program. And I know you get the T S B A emails where they have little podcasts come through, well, we're going to be one of the podcasts. And so E T and I are going to do that next week, and so as soon as that goes live, you know that I'll be letting you know that. And then we are beginning registration process for next year, so if you are a current Clinton City student, we are accepting your registration forms as of now. Our student transfer period is going to open from April the fifteenth through the July the fifteenth. And then parents, if you have a child that's going to be five on or before August the fifteenth of this year, you can call central office beginning on July, no, April fifteenth. Call on April the fifteenth and set up an in-person registration time, and I have listed the times there. But for the public who might be listening, Clinton Elementary is going to be May third from eight to eleven, and then again from three thirty to six thirty. South Clinton will be May the fourth from three thirty to six thirty, and North Clinton will be May the sixth from three thirty to five thirty. And then we are also currently accepting governor pre-K applications right now, and students who would qualify for that have to be for or before August fifteenth. So just continue to help us spread the, spread the good word about Clinton City schools, and hopefully we'll have a good enrollment period. And that concludes my report, other than you do have one additional task that if you could complete before you leave, to help us better prepare for the retreat, there is a. A packet. That Kim, Kim's going to give you, but if you can just fill out who plans to come with you, she has to give a roster for the room. And then there is meal choices, we all don't have to choose the same thing, so we need your meal choices.
Well, I got an update on that, I confirmed that, and he just responded and said, yes, there would be just one meal.
Well, then we're going to gather and decide what meal we would like to have.
We'd like a slider which actually had turkey on it. I ordered sliders, turkey sliders, and I had, I think it was two that didn't have any, any turkey on it.
We will request the turkey be on the slider.
Yes.
But if we could stay for a minute and you all could help us do that, then we'll get that turned in. But that concludes my report, any questions for me?
Now, that's great, everything was so good.
Good stuff is happening, it's exciting times.
It is exciting. And to go in those classrooms and see that, like you said, first graders.
It was amazing. It was amazing.
Great, and sixth graders will say anything, anytime, a visitor.
You know what, though, I was, she was so blown away by how, because usually you think of sixth grade and middle school, and you know, they have that middle school attitude, she was blown away by how open our kids were to talking to us when we came in and walking around, and that's just because they've been taught to do that.
That's great.
I think it's also because of this small school system, I don't think you can improve on a neighborhood school. I think that they're comfortable, you get to know them all, they know you, I think that has a lot to do with it.
It's just that, that comfort level, but their self-confidence. And I mean, she said, you know, normally in sixth grade, you know, they're down, they're not wanting to talk, and our kids were actively engaged, and you lean in and listen, and they just kept talking, and it was all academic, on-task talk, and just, it's very refreshing to see.
Okay, and I guess that concludes our meeting, unless someone has anything else. I'm going to do this just because I want to.
Good job.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.